Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, May 28, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to remind anyone in our audience who would like to speak to any item on our agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to fill out a speaker request form that are on the table just before you enter the council chambers, and get that form to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, and we will get you up at the appropriate time. With that, I would like to ask our city clerk Lynn Fazekas to provide the roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan. McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. For the benefit of our fellow aldermen and for those who are with us and are listening, Alderman Fagan from our Fourth Ward, he had called me earlier last week and indicated that a professional commitment on his part precluded him from appearing tonight, so Pat will not be with us tonight. We are blessed to have had a very heartfelt and meaningful Memorial Day here in the city of DeKalb. The city looked great, our downtown area with the new Locust Street banners honoring our heroes, those who have served in our nation's military, and our brand-new flag banners on Lincoln Highway between the Fourth and First looked very, very good. And we had a good time, and the weatherman cooperated here in the city of DeKalb. We were able to take part in a couple of really poignant ceremonies. We're also fortunate to have had a number of our city council staff and elected officials to serve in the military, and one of those is one of our new aldermen, and that is Carolyn Morris, who represents our community's Fourth Ward. She is a retired Marine, and I'd like to ask that Marine to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Appreciate it.
He's from the First Ward.
What did I say? Fourth? First, sorry. I told Alderman McAdams that I will not call him Alderman Norrico tonight, so I apologize, Alderman Morris. Okay, our first item on tonight's agenda, item C, is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
I need help.
I beg your pardon?
You didn't say by who.
Oh.
Thank you.
Who made that motion?
I did.
Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as written. We now go to item D, public participation. We do have one member of the public who has indicated a desire to speak to an item not on the agenda, and that is Dwayne Brown from the Fourth Ward in an ongoing regular on the Jim Mason Radio Show.
I didn't know I was a celebrity. Governor Pritzker is considering many new tax increases in his $39 billion budget proposal, such as a graduated state income tax with a top rate of 7.85 percent. The satellite fee and the plastic bag fee have fallen by the wayside, fortunately. A doubling of the gas tax from 19 cents to 38 cents per gallon, taxing ride-sharing and additional $1 per pack of cigarettes, more tax on alcohol, gaming, and sports gambling, legal marijuana, and casinos. The state recently learned it would take in 1.5 billion more than expected from increased tax revenue, and next year's projections are up 800 million. Vehicle registration would almost double for vehicles three years old and newer. Pritzker's capital spending plan, which he calls Rebuild Illinois, calls for $41.5 billion in infrastructure spending over six years. Illinois cannot simply tax its problems away. Cutting expenses is an essential part of balancing any budget, and spending cuts and cost control measures are necessary. We need a plan for getting our $134 billion unfunded pension obligations under control. We need to reduce the Tier One pensions, which allow a 3% yearly increase and cap the amount any one can collect in state pension benefits. We need a pledge that property taxes will be frozen or decreased for the next five years. Illinois has the second-highest property tax in the nation, second only to New Jersey. We need to demand that our representatives bring fiscal discipline back to address our $8 billion in unpaid bills. If the proposed tax increases are acceptable to you, do nothing. However, if you find them too extreme, please call your state senator and state representative and demand changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. I don't believe there are any other folks who would like to speak to...
Mayor? Mayor, I believe Mr. Crum may want to speak.
Ah, yes, you are current. Darrell Crum, 324 Ridge Drive. Darrell?
Thank you for giving me this time.
Sure.
My interest or my concern is the effect that artificial intelligence is going to have on the employment of DeKalb, the city of DeKalb, because we are invested heavily in warehousing, and one of the first candidates of AI, using AI to replace employees, is in warehousing. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask the council, if I were to write a white paper, this is all I'm asking for, if I were to write a white paper on what I think the impact would be in terms of what it would do to the employees of 3M and how the city, of companies like 3M, and how the city will address that, address the unemployment, would you accept the white paper and distribute it among the council and the city officers?
Yeah, we don't usually have a dialogue with our public participants, but I can, think I can speak freely for this council that any paper, any white paper, anything given to us frankly by any citizen in the city of DeKalb, especially as it relates to an issue that you feel very, very strongly about, we would certainly accept it, we would certainly distribute it, and if we feel that any action as it relates to that particular topic, we would probably carry that forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that, is that a fair representation, City Council? Good. Okay, now I don't believe there are any other speakers under this portion of the agenda, so let's move on to item E, presentations. Our first presentation is a proclamation that I will read for General Aviation Month, and I'm going to ask our airport manager, Tom Cleveland, to come up and receive this award, or this proclamation. "I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of DeKalb and declare June as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the city of DeKalb." Tom, as you are coming forward, I'd like to just emphasize to you and to all of our citizens the importance of the DeKalb Taylor Regional, our city municipal airport. We really appreciate what you are doing there, and as you receive this proclamation, I'd like you to present this to your board tonight, which I understand is meeting at 7:00, and I understand you have a short announcement prior to your leaving.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. June is a pretty exciting month at the airport. June 1st, we have the Experimental Aircraft Association Young Eagles program, that's for kids from ages eight to 17. You can come out on June 1st between 9:00 and 11:00 in the morning and get a free airplane ride. So please have, you know, the community, come on out, get an airplane ride. You got to get there early, get on the list. June 2nd, again, the Experimental Aircraft Association, it's our annual fly-in, drive-in pancake breakfast. June 2nd, that's Sunday, that's from 8:30 to 11:00. It's a good time for the community to come out and take a look at what's going on at the airport, and you can talk to all the pilots at fly-in. And then on June 22nd, we got our first, first annual Balloons Brews and Blues Festival at the airport. So it should be a lot of fun. So thank you for this.
Very good. And we appreciate Mike Embry and his crew in helping to work with Tom on the Balloons, Brews, and Blues Festival on the 22nd, and there'll be more information on that in the media as we get closer to the June 22 date. Item number two under presentations, one that is certainly going to be very meaningful to this city and to this city council, and that is the recognition of our retiring police chief, Gene Lowery, and I'd like to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to present a special presentation to Chief Lowery. Chief, come on up.
Caroline Lowery is in the audience. We'd like her to come up.
Okay, Caroline, where are you? You're learning more about blues, brews, and balloons back there with Michael, huh? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it falls to me to try to say in my modest fashion how much we appreciate this gentleman's service to our community. We ask about police chief that he be honest, that he be fair and consistent, and that he love justice. And with Gene, from the beginning, on May 29th, 2012, through today and through this week, when he ended up, you could check all those boxes in dark, dark day. Gene, in behalf of the mayor and city council, in behalf of our staff and everybody in the community who's worked with you, and that's just about everybody, I want to say thank you for all you've done, and a great career with us. Thank you so much. He has a few words, but before we get, we have one more thing. This is what we give to all our best chiefs. You can hang this off the street. We want safe streets, so just go in your driveway, sir. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Counsel, staff, community, thank you so much for this opportunity to come up and say just a few more words as I make my last appearance before you in the capacity of chief. So first, after thanking many people, but first, that line of thanks is my wife, Caroline. Baby, thank you. We made it. We're here. It's our time now. So we're looking forward to that, but she's been a rock for me. And at home, it's Team Lowery. It's not Gene or Caroline, it's Team Lowery. So that's been a huge part, and I know that's a huge part for every one of us in how successful we are. I flashed the clock back to May 12, when you, this part, well, gosh, there is part of the council, no, I guess there isn't anymore. Holy cow. Well, the whole different council then gave me the opportunity, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime. I'm so grateful, and I am so grateful. Let me tell you, after 40 years of service and three years in the military, and I got to do a hand salute to my brother in arms back there, Dwayne Brown, served in Vietnam, the United States Army, and to you two as well, Mayor Smith, and to Michael Embry as well, if I'm missing any veterans, I apologize, but thank you for that. Thank you for your service. So it's been a long road, and I've never taken a break in between jobs. So I'm going to take a break. My wife and I are going to have that little bit of peace. But I want you to know how grateful I am. I've had a blessed life. I've had a blessed career. Sometimes I wish I had a little bit more knowledge and made better decisions along the way, but I can tell you from the heart, I always did my best. Always did my best. Sometimes it might not have measured up, but I was always there for you, for the city administration, and for this community. Thanks, thanks to all the staff. But Bill, thank you. I consider you a friend and a mentor. Bill was one of the first, first individuals who came up to me when I got here and made a huge difference in my life. So grateful for that. When I look at the community, and there's times some folks in the community would get my dander up, but I got to be honest with you. Everybody in this community has their heart in the right place. And when people start to think about getting down, instead of thinking about getting down or talking in a negative format, think about problem solving and think about working together. The one lesson I learned from Camp Power was when, when many people come together in fragments of time or in large spans of time, miracles can occur. We have that ability here, and I'm very optimistic about the future of this community. You're doing a great job with that, and this community would be rewarded for it down the road. So thank you for that. So I'm going to close out by talking for just a second about the future. And it's not my future, it's about the future of the Police Department. The men and women of the Police Department have been my greatest blessing in my professional life. They are the finest. And you as electeds, as city staff and the community, you need to know the job they do is tough, they have challenges, and they do it, and they do it very well, and for that, you are blessed. Now, the reason, the reason we have such good people, the reason we have a good department is, isn't because of me, it's because of them. And I cherish them, and I cherish the experience with them. So if I had to leave this service, I thank the Almighty, I get to leave it from the DeKalb Police Department. So the future is this. You have a young leader in the wings, John Petragallo. His family's here with him tonight. You can rest assured that you are in good hands. He's a good man, he's a good leader. He'll have some bumps in the road, too, but he'll get through them. Thank you, John. Thank you to your family as well. So in closing, thank you again very much, everyone. Remember, you can't solve everything with a dollar, and you can't solve, you can't answer every question by withholding a dollar. I hope God's with you on every step of your journey, in every decision you make, because every decision you do make has an impact on someone. But I can tell you what, you've had an awesome impact on me. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know Gene's still working his way down the line, but you know every time that he has sworn in a new officer, he talks about his four pillars.
Mm-hmm.
One of which is leaving in a better place than you were when you got here.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, and Gene has done that.
You better believe it. Thank you.
I hope he heard me.
I'm going to ask city manager Nicholas back up here because I'm told we have another presentation. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. We have another stalwart whose last meeting is tonight, Dean Frieders. And at the end of the week, we will appropriately embarrass, I mean, honor. But tonight, I thought it was fitting to say a few words. We also expect a lot of a city attorney. Naturally, we expect depth and breadth of the law. We expect that person to be responsive, to be available to the client who's here. In these ways, Dean Frieders has been extraordinary. No one has, who has worked for the city, elected or appointed, has ever had trouble reaching this man. In fact, if, if you send a text and it's not answered in five minutes, obviously there's something wrong with the network. It has nothing to do with him. He's, in my short time, this go-around, he's been extremely responsive, helpful, supportive, at times, in a very gentle, professorial way, explained how I am wrong, and I appreciate that. So Dean, if you'd come forward, I want to provide you with something. Now, for all of these stellar characteristics, there is one thing that all of you who have worked with Dean know. There is, there is a couple of ways, and then there is Dean's way. So I thought it was appropriate that we would get him assigned a said Frieder's way. Dean, thank you for so many things for all of us, and you guys would like to...
Thank you.
I'll be very, very brief, as I had to follow Chief Lowery, and he, of course, took all the good things to say. And actually, back when I first started, I was going to come to a meeting and talk about these four important leadership principles that I thought were relevant to the city, and then Gene came up and talked about those as well. I will miss many things about the city, including explaining in a very genteel fashion to the city manager why he's wrong. I will miss working with the amazing and dedicated staff that you have, that despite anything else going on in the community, maintained continuity in the city's operations, keep the water flowing, keep the streets cleared, keep people that are breaking the law going in the direction they should be going, putting fires out, saving people's lives. I will miss working, the privilege of working with them on a daily basis, 24 hours a day. You have incredibly talented people here. But what gives me great pleasure is seeing, there's no one at either of these tables that was at either of these tables when I started in September of 2011, and seeing the crop of leaders that you have, that you've developed, seeing people like Ray Munch come up as assistant city manager, and seeing how much he has grown working for the city over the past couple of years, and of course, seeing people like my good friend, John Petragallo, who is one of the finest men I've ever had the privilege of knowing. I am privileged to have served in the capacity that I did, but I'm hopeful that this council recognizes the talent and dedication from all of your personnel, not just the two of us that are leaving you this evening, because you have amazing people that keep the city moving and keep it moving in the direction that you wish it'd be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, as Dean makes his way down the table of our staff members, I know we're going to be ably served by John Petragallo, whose appointment is up for council consideration tonight. I hope that we have a positive consideration of that. Also, as you know, we did choose a new firm to represent us at the end of Dean Frieder's departure, and one of the two folks who will be serving us, Matt Rose being the other, is the senior partner at the firm, John Donahue, and he's with us tonight to see what we look like. John, would you stand up? He's our new legal counsel. Yeah. Great to have you. Thank you. Okay, I don't believe there are any other presentations. There are no mayoral appointments for this evening. We'll move along to item G, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion unless a council member asks that a item be removed from the consent agenda. Are any items requested to be removed? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. We now move along to item H on the agenda, and I am going to open a public hearing, a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement for property located at 1827 Pleasant Street. This is requested by Common.
I'm sorry, but I think we might need to back up and read consent agenda items.
Oh, yes, I will read the consent agenda items that we've already approved, but the council has seen those. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of May 13, 2019. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 13, 2019. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through May 28, 2019, in the amount of $2,133,412.68. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through March 2019. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through March 2019. Number six, Freedom of Information Act, FOIA report, April 2019. And number seven, Resolution 2019-080, authorizing the execution of the DeKalb County Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Memorandum of Understanding. We did have a motion, we did have a second, we did have a roll call and approval of that consent agenda, as was presented to our council previously. Thank you, city clerk Fazekas, for reminding me that I should have read those. Thank you. Okay, I am now going to open a public hearing at 6:30. A public hearing regarding the annexation agreement request for property located at 1827 Pleasant Street by Commonwealth Edison. I'd like to ask city manager Nicholas, who has suggested or has let me know that the... I'd like to ask City Manager Nicholas, who has suggested, or has let me know, that the petitioner and the city manager have requested some additional time on this, right?
That's correct, Mayor. And so, we'd appreciate it if the council could continue this public hearing until June 24.
Okay. I would ask for any public participation before we close the public hearing.
Mayor, we're not closing the public hearing. We're just continuing.
We're postponing it. Do we have a date for that postponement?
June 24.
June 24. Okay.
So, we need a motion and a second to continue.
Okay. I will ask for any public participation on this. If there are none, I will close the public hearing at 6:31.
You can't close it, Mayor.
Not yet. I'll make the motion that we continue the public hearing until June 24.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we postpone the meeting and move it until Ju, to the June 24 meeting. Any comments or any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
It was moved and seconded to postpone the public hearing to June 24. It's been approved, and I will now close the public hearing at 6:32. There are no special considerations for our meeting this evening, so we'll move along to Item J on your agenda, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2019-081, authorizing initiation of an intergovernmental transfer of real property pertaining to 164 East Lincoln Highway and related undertakings. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Finuchin. We do have one person who would like to speak to this item, and that is Steve Capitaine.
Sorry, I was not able to contact my Alderman or others because I went on the city website and could not find phone numbers or email addresses in the route that I took. So, I need to talk to people about your website. My question to you tonight is, what's the rush? While I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea of moving City Hall downtown, I don't think the case has been made to move into the Neering Building. There are many questions that haven't been answered, and there are other potential options for relocating City Hall. The Caves Building and the Menock Building could be explored. We haven't seen drawings of the expected layout for use by the city in the Neering Building. I've been in that building many times. It's pretty tight. And when the city used this building for 90 employees, there were, there were, there were police officers here on rotating shifts. So, there weren't people here all the, all the time. What happens with the, where did the police go for their shooting range? I'm also not comfortable imposing upon the library and the community who use library rooms quite extensively for plan commission, city council, and other commission and committee meetings. I don't see using the library as a long-term solution. What happens if council meetings run past 9 o'clock? Who provides the security for the building when the library closes? What if this, a future council, this council or a future council wants to start the regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. to make it more convenient for the public? That would push it past 9 o'clock frequently. Retaining and City Hall, retaining and remodeling City Hall should be evaluated. The sale of City Hall is a monumental decision. It's a serious decision that should engage the public in hearings and evaluations and presentations over a period of time. The public just learned about this last week, and we're being asked to make that decision and make that commitment tonight. I just think it's being rushed. This is a serious decision to make. There are TIF implications as well, for this property as well as downtown property as well. So, that hasn't been discussed. Will the city employees be required to park at remote locations? Sure, there's plenty of parking spaces, but are they going to have to park at remote locations in order to avoid taking business customer spots? Are five spaces going to be enough for the short-term parking? We have a lot more than that here. There are other, people are going to use the short-term parking for other business activity, not just the city. We can't say city business-only parking for 30 minutes. What if the, the permit process takes more than the 30 minutes? You know, there's, there are a lot of serious questions there. The use of this building is very effective right now. We have three good tenants, there are three good tenants making good use of that building right now. I just don't think that the city has evaluated its options thoroughly, and the public deserves that before such a monumental decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I'm going to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, who has reviewed this pretty extensively with, with, I think, with the media, with our public hearing that we had, or our commit, planning the zoning commission meeting. I know, I know he's chatted quite a bit with members of the city council, but Bill, having said that, I'd like you to add any comments you'd like to make on this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution, first, just to the business at hand, the resolution before you would establish the intent of the council to accept the transfer of the DeKalb Park District property that we've been calling Neering Building at 164 East Lincoln Highway, no later than December 31 of this year. And the purpose of the transfer, as has been stated, is to move City Hall from the present location here to a downtown area in order to bring very significant foot traffic to our downtown core during the regular work week. And the actual conveyance would come at no cost to the city. So, there has been a lot of public discussion about this, and I am in a position to hear a lot of it. People will call me. I hear a lot of conversation in informal ways, but more specifically, I've, I've tried to avail myself of more organized paths, such as the Downtown Merchants, which I met with this morning, and they were very warmly supportive of this proposition. There's been a lot of good media coverage, and we thank our local media for that. There's been a lot of discussion around the community, around the celebrations yesterday and the memorial events. There was a lot of conversation, a lot of people talking about this. The impression I get is there's a lot, a lot of public support. I think one of the most creative parts of this is the intergovernmental collaboration. We talk a lot about how we can work better together, and we do collaborate with our other tax, local taxing bodies in a number of ways, as we've talked about here before. This is a much more profound way than we have found to be able to collaborate with our local park district. Amy Dolls in the audience tonight are the executive director of the DeKalb Park District, and may want to speak to this as well. Also, we have found a way to collaborate with our public library. And in, in discussions with Emily Faulkner, I've found a warm acceptance of this proposition. Again, we're talking about three nights a month, not an overwhelming imposition by any means, and not an imposition at all, according to Emily. In fact, they are very welcoming of this proposition. And I have to say, who better than the city is able to protect a building after 9 o'clock at night? We'd be able to provide for the safe passage of people from a meeting that might go over if the library staff have to go home. All the issues that we just heard this evening are all surmountable, have all been discussed. We feel very strongly at the staff level that this is a good decision to make at this time. It's a property that would not cost us anything. We can look at other properties, and we can pay anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million and buy them. And that's an additional cost. We don't have that kind of money. I'm not proposing that we use TIF money to relocate this operation. Another thing, it's not this council, but councils have been looking at this building, and it's possible future use, at least since 2011, in an organized way. I have on my desk, and this was a reference for me, a 2011 study in our, about our heating and air conditioning system, a 2014 study about the possible relocation of this government to other places, what it would mean for this building. We've talked to a certified commercial broker about what the value of this building might be, and we are confident there's, there's enough value still in the building and the one block area, which is just under 3 acres, to more than compensate us for the move. So, I could go into more detail, but I think the case has been laid out before you in detail in your background, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend your support for this resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over now to any of our Aldermen, who would like to make any comments or have any questions. Alderman Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So, it sounds like the primary reason behind our move is the way that it's been laid out, it sounds like to generate more foot traffic downtown. Yes?
That's part of the, yeah. And, and it's a big reason. And the other part is to, is to show our commitment to the downtown core, which is a major part of the identity that we have as a community.
And also, keeping in mind that this building is aging, needs lots of repairs.
Correct.
Including the one that you mentioned, the heating and air system, the study done in 2011. So, I guess the first question that comes to my mind, given that's our purpose, is what are the numbers on how many people we have coming through this building? You know, just to take a look at what the true impact is going to be. That's one of my concerns. Another concern I have is that, I love this idea, I really do. I think it's great to have us downtown. I think it will be a nice place to centrally locate things. But I'm also concerned that we are considering downsizing only to have to upsize in the future. And so, I guess because of that, I'd like to know exactly, not exactly, obviously, you can't give exactly, but I'd like to have a more clear picture of the price tag on the renovations that we're going to be doing to make this building work. And I guess, you know, maybe it's just my ignorance, but I don't know how many exactly employees we have here now. And I know you said 90 before, at a max, maybe. And, you know, so how many we're going to be transferring? And, yeah, so those are some of my immediate concerns.
Thank you.
I can, I can address those, Mayor, if you want.
Please.
I can wait. I'll take the last ones first. So, we have, if we throw in all of our interns, part-timers, it's 30 people in the building right now, and we expect to move 25. We, the usage of this building depends on the day, but on a, on a regular basis, the people coming into the building department, coming to the front desk to pay water bills, other types of bills, coming in looking for information, coming in to visit the people in the building here for meetings and so forth, runs in the hundreds in the course of a day. That's in an average day. That's, that's a generator that, as it stands now, would be the biggest generator of foot traffic in the downtown area. Could we move into the building now? Absolutely. There's three tenants in there now. But if we're going to move in, that would be the best time, and I think most people know if they move into a place from one place to another, if you want to do some, any upgrades, change out the carpet, do some painting, fix the bathrooms, do that kind of a thing, you do it hopefully before you move in and let people then get settled and apportioned out across the building. And so, I, in meeting with the tenants in the last couple of weeks, we feel that we'll have that time to do that. And in any case, we can move in as we please after the tenants are out, after we've done some things. So, how much would that cost? And here again, common sense, I think, needs to come into play, even into governmental costing of things. We see enough at the federal and the state and other local levels of governments, sky's the limit. We all, we know that we, we don't have that kind of luxury. We are working with, within constraints. We don't have a general capital budget. I propose that we pay for the move out of the sale of properties that we have. We have 28 properties right now, the most valuable of which are this building and the building across the street at 223 South Fourth Street. So, the, the cost could be anywhere from $0 to $300,000 on the high end.
What if the properties don't sell? What if we don't have a property? Are we going to, are we going to make our move contingent upon the sale of a property?
No. I, I think that's, that's up to the council, what we do in the end. But another option would be that they will sell. The, and the council has seen these assessments. It's hard to find comps for this building, as you might guess, and also for our building across the street. But the comps that were professionally assessed have us anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars. Now, it could be $200,000. We don't know. The market will, will define that ultimately, and will define the, the future costs. This building hasn't changed hands since 1967, so we don't have a better track record than looking at what other buildings of similar size have sold for from Elgin to DeKalb. But that's, that's the general area that was assessed for, for this. So, I think we'll have, we'll have the money in hand if we commit. The next resolution is commit to the sale of 223 South Fourth, which needs a little cleaning, but it's otherwise pretty ready to show. The, is there no risk? There's, I can't say that. There's, but I think the risk is calculated and acceptable at this point.
I'd like to open it up to more discussion, but given the fact that we have a resolution that we're being asked to authorize tonight, we're going to be talking about the two other building across the street tonight. I think making the move contingent on the sale of this building is just something that doesn't make sense. That's just, I think it would just not be workable.
Well, I mean contingent upon the sale of some buildings. You know, we have 28 buildings you mentioned.
Oh, I see.
28 properties.
Yeah, 28 properties. Okay. I beg your pardon. Okay. But let's have some more discussion. Any, any thoughts? Alderman Favor.
So, I, I understand where Alderman Morris is going with the, what if we need more space in the future? What I don't like seeing is I don't like to see us plan for expansion and growth when what we're trying to do through this move, and what we've done in the last year, is trying to reduce this footprint of our government. And I think we do have additional space at the Public Works Department. Should we need a few additional offices?
That's correct.
So, I think it's sending the message that the previous council, because I don't want to speak for the three new council members right now, but, you know, that was our, our direction and our input to the city staff and to the city manager, was we wanted to reduce the size of our footprint. We wanted to reduce the cost to the community that the government is costing them. And moving to a smaller building, it is going to be downtown. It is, it's not on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's within walking distance of the new developments that we're talking about. new developments that we're talking about, it is foot, you know, just a few steps away from restaurants and things like that, where right here, probably most people don't go out to lunch because to walk over to, the nearest location is probably just across the street McDonald's and across the street the new Dunkin' Donuts and things that we have there, is probably too far to walk, and if it's sprinkling or whatever, where we're going to have a grocery store, a genre, we have several downtown restaurants that are right there within walking distance. I like the direction, I like the direction that we're moving, I think it's a good move, I support it.
Any other thoughts or questions? Alderman Verbic.
And in addition to that, it is that rightsizing that we are faced with, and I applaud this effort because we are bringing governing bodies together, and that will be the key for our future success in DeKalb, is that our governing bodies work together, how do we combine our resources, how do we build our buying power on things that we have in common? And I think that as we hold meetings at the library, and I wouldn't be opposed to holding council meetings at other locations across the city, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Alderman McAdams.
One idea that was brought forward from the community that I thought was worth exploring was the idea that there would be alternative locations for council meetings. One idea was that the police, the new police building, there's an office space there, and so I'd like to see some sort of comparison between all the different places and see which is the best fit. I also like the idea of having different locations, that seems like an interesting idea.
Alderman Smith.
To address Alderman Morris's question about foot traffic, prior to the police department moving, there was a study done on the number of foot traffic to City Hall, and I don't know if Chief will recall this, but majority, I think 90, 95% of the foot traffic to City Hall was for the police department, I think that has now been moved to the West End. The other thing is this, the HVA system in this building is in terrible shape. It's not going to last, it is not going to last. I've been here when the heat doesn't come on, I think some of these guys here will be the same way, or when the air conditioning doesn't work in the summer. What are we going to do when the HVA system fails? Or what are we going to do when one of the pipes that leak constantly in this building fail? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars is that going to cost us? We can't afford that, but we would have to pay for that fix if we're in this building. So, to me, it makes sense to move. I think, you know, cooperation between government bodies is critical here. You're asking for the library to step up, they have, you've asked for the Park District, for Amy to step up, they have. I think it's the right move for us, Mayor.
And to move this building to the building downtown, and to put this building back on the tax rolls will actually generate dollars that we really need. And I appreciate the fact that perhaps not every question has been answered, you know, one of the things, Alderman McAdams, that I think we have to take a big, strong look at as we move over there is how we equip that building with AV, and how we wire it, if you will, so that we can continue to do the city council televised broadcasts. And the problem with moving something from place to place sometimes would make that somewhat problematic, I'm not saying that the idea is not a good one, but I think that we have enough time, the projected move in, I think, from what I understand, is late this year, at the earliest, early in 2020 at the latest, and it's going to give us some time to take a look at some of those things that you're hearing from your constituents, all of you are. And, but I, as Alderman Verbic has said, I applaud the idea, and I appreciate the Park District's participation, along with our city manager, and, you know, we continue to stay in contact with those three tenants, because we're concerned, we don't want any of those tenants to feel like they've been short-changed on this intergovernmental agreement and transfer, if in fact it is approved tonight. Is that a?
Yes, one last.
Yes.
Yeah, I love the idea of having it at different locations, I think the opportunity, having the council meeting at different locations, I think that allows the opportunity to draw attention to various different places that people may have never been, and I think if we can figure out how to do the audio visual for that, that could be fantastic.
Yeah, I agree with you, so, okay. Any further comments? Alderman Verbic.
And to echo Mr. Capitan's concerns, I think that with regard to the future of this space, this building or this lot, I think it goes to the importance of revisiting our comprehensive plan, working with our governing partners on what should be the plans for this property. I think the community engagement component is critical to those kind of decisions.
Alderman Smith.
I believe the park, excuse me, the library has one of the very advanced technology was built into that design, and I think they can probably handle our broadcasts. Emily would care to answer that, if that's all right?
That certainly, they're light years ahead of us in terms of technologies. Any other comments? If not, we've had a motion, and second, we've had adequate discussion, I believe, on this resolution request, and I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, that resolution is passed. Now, instead of tandem with that resolution is item number two, Resolution 2019-082, authorizing the solicitation and execution of real property marketing and listing agreements for that property located at 200 South Fourth Street, which is this building, and 223 South Fourth Street. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. We do have another, Steve Capitan, once again, would like to speak to this item, Steve.
I appreciate that you all raised questions on the last issue, but you decided to go ahead with it without answering some of them. Putting 223 South Fourth Street on the market makes sense, that building across the street was vacated when the police department moved and people moved over here, and that was a rightsizing. Whether or not this building is feasible for renovation, I think that needs to be laid on the table and presented to the public, and has not been. As the city manager mentioned, there have been evaluations of what needs to be done, and that could be done in short order. Before selling, considering selling this property, though, I think it would be important to evaluate what needs to be done in the nearing building, because the city manager gave an estimate from zero to 300,000. We have not seen any plans about sketches about where people would go, how this would be done. It's just been done on faith, and I still don't understand what the rush is about this. This is a monumental decision that you all have made, and I just do not understand, I'm not opposed to it, I'm opposed to the rush to do this, and there hasn't been public discussion. Maybe you all have done this privately, but it hasn't been done publicly. The public has been only aware of this for a week or so.
Thank you, Steve. City Council, City Manager Nicholas, do you have any comments on this particular resolution?
Just to say, the prospect of selling some property has been part of that discussion, and communication today moves instantaneously, so I think the word has gotten out, there've been lots and lots of discussion about this, as well as the first item that the council considered tonight. What's before you in terms of this resolution is to allow the city manager to solicit marketing and listing agreements, to work with appropriately certified realtors, to enter an agreement and to create a contingency fee agreement for the marketing and listing of this particular building in 223 South Fourth. Specifically, a little bit of detail here, the standard would be to restrict any contingency fee to 5% if any city property is sold through a broker without another broker involved, and if more than one broker is involved, then maximum 6%, and that's pretty much the standard in the industry, and we want to hold to that limit as well. So, that's what's before you, we have to start somewhere and to seek out people who are qualified to sell commercial property.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Alderman Fanoukian.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public understands that it's only the building at 223 South Fourth, not the building on Grove where the Youth Service Bureau is involved and the Family Services Agency and Voluntary Action Center. I want to make that very clear, that it's only one of the two buildings across the street that the city owns, because I think that's an important distinction for the public to be aware of.
Thank you for that, and I've had a few calls as well, thank you for that clarification.
Good point, Alderman Fanoukian, thank you. Alderman Verbic.
And I think to dovetail on Councilmember Morris's suggestion that we somehow take or capture the proceeds from the sales of these parcels to build a funding model of some kind. So, what would be the priorities for the proceeds from the sales from those properties, for example?
May I just suggest, we had some conversation about this at the staff, we don't have a general capital fund.
Right.
Just capital here, we're not talking about personnel costs and so forth. And one way to start that fund, and this is how it was started years ago, we had some proceeds from various sources, this goes back 25 years, and created a little bit of nest egg, and it could be used for a number of things, capital-related items, of course, some remodeling if necessary, if desirable, in the nearing building, but we have a long list of capital needs from streets and our fleet and you name it, we've got it. So, if we had something there, which would obviously be only dispersed at the council's pleasure and after considerable thought and review in a public meeting, I think that would be a good thing. So, the money would go into some type of a capital fund that would be there for these purposes.
Okay, any further discussion on this resolution request? If not, roll call, please.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Item number three, Resolution Number 2019-083, authorizing the appointment of John Petragallo as interim police chief, effective June 1, 2019. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
For the benefit of those people watching and maybe haven't a background to work from, I thought it would be only fair to read into the record a few of Mr. Petragallo's qualifications for this position. He was hired back in 1994 as a certified police officer. He successively rose through the ranks to first serving in a special task force for about a year and a half, served as detective for a long time, about nine years, patrol sergeant for seven years, operations commander following that for two years, and has been deputy chief since 2015. He holds a BS degree in sociology/criminology from NIU, he's on the verge of completing his Master of Science in Public Administration at NIU. He's also graduate of the very esteemed FBI Academy, that was in 2007. He holds many certifications in law enforcement, a full page and a half, it's affiliated with a number of professional organizations, I'll just mention a few of the leading ones, International Association of Chiefs of Police, the DeKalb County Law Enforcement Executives Association, and the Northern Illinois Training and Standards Board Executive Committee. John is a doer, he doesn't just serve and show up, he volunteers, he works hard at everything he's done and does now. I recommend the interim appointment so that he has a chance to assess how that position is, how that feels to him, and we get to assess how well he does, and I think it's appropriate in this case. And I've also recommended a slight increase over his current salary of 5%, I very strongly support your approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, congratulations, soon-to-be Chief John Petragallo. John, I'd like you to come up if you would, I know you have some family members with Perhaps you could introduce the folks with you, and if you'd like to make any comments, keep them brief like Chief Lowery, you know what I mean?[1611.13][1611.13][laughter]
My wife, Michelle, my sister Paula, two daughters, Haley and Maya.
Stand up, please.[1618.63][1618.63][applause] John, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to lead the men and women of our fine police department. I'm honored, I'm proud to do this job, and I'm ready for the challenge, so I'm excited about this next step. The Chief Lowery, you've done a lot for us, so we thank you for all the positive momentum that's been brought to our department, most in part of you. Personally, I want to thank you for everything you've done for me, I've learned a lot, I've watched, I've listened, maybe you didn't always think so, but I did, so I really appreciate it. And to be cliche, it's the fourth pillar that I think Alderman Fanoukian had mentioned, you left us better than you found us, so thank you.
As John moves down the tables there to receive his congratulations, and a pretty hefty hug there from Jean Lowery, I mean, that says it all right there, and I appreciate it, so. Congratulations, we will move along to item number four on your agenda, under this particular number, Resolution 2019-084, authorizing a 17-month purchasing agreement extension with Petroleum Traders Corporation for the purchase of vehicle fuel for the period of August 1, 2019 to December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas.
I promise I'm not going to read through all these numbers, but I thought it'd be useful for you to see how the numbers are determined and who gets the gas here, and it's not only our departments, but we also it's not only our departments, but we also have a fuel center that is open to VAC and Children's Learning Center in the Park District, so we have a collaborative there because we do get some advantage here. But what's before you tonight is the total of about $4,000. There are three pieces, as I mentioned in my background, to the fuel contract price that we pay. About 88% of the total fuel cost is governed by the Oil Price Information Service, which we have no control over. We also have no control over the taxes paid per gallon for unleaded and for diesel, and I itemized what those are, but we do have some control over the vendor's margin and delivery price. So we're talking about a delivery price. That's the variable that's before you tonight. And the people who have been under contract with us, Petroleum Traders Corporation, have their contract expiring in August, or by August 1st. They have offered to hold their price, no CPI increase for another 18 months. We don't frankly feel we can do better, so that's what's before you tonight, to extend their contract for 18 months.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Alderman Fanouken.
Just that having dealt with the Petroleum Traders when I was at the university, it's a good company, they treat us fairly, and I'm also want to make a comment, I'm glad to see that we're bringing it in line with the fiscal year also.
Good. Alderman Morris.
One question. So if the tax that Dwayne Brown mentioned goes into effect, do we get to skip that but through our contract?
The tax is not something we control.
Okay.
So, you know, it falls on the per gallon, whether, by the type of fuel.
So if the taxes go up, we're not protected or...
It will affect us, but we don't get to control that.
I think, just keeping in mind that that might happen, maybe we need to think about more fuel-efficient plans if that does happen.
Yes.
That's all.
We've been seeing those three words used a lot lately, motor fuel tax, so. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Let's move on to number five, resolution 2019-085, authorizing the award of a bid to Kern Contracting Company in the amount of $536,000 for 1.88 lane miles of street resurfacing on Joanne Lane, Golf View Place, Islemwood Drive, Weinberry Court, and Manning Drive, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined total of $552,080. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbi. City manager Nicholas.
This is the first of two contracts we're going to discuss tonight for paving. We've got some really good prices, and I'm happy to report that, and thanks to Zach Gil for, and Brian Favor for making that happen and providing good specs, and also we had some pretty hungry contractors out there. So what's before you tonight is some pricing that is below the engineer's estimate, and that allows us to approve a little less than 3% of a cushion to allow for any change orders. Things that happened as we're getting the paving done, a little cinch up near a driveway approach or something like that, or around a catch basin that maybe wasn't considered when we did the specs. And so the number before you is, the overall number is $552,080. That includes change orders up to the amount of about $16,000. We recommend your approval.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Let's go on to number six, resolution 2019-086, authorizing the award of a bid to Kern Contracting Company in the amount of $691,151.42 for 3.45 lane miles of street resurfacing and crack mitigation on North First Street from West Dresser Road North to Bethany Road, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined total of $715,341. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbi. City manager Nicholas.
This is just a little more layered. So we want to resurface a very highly-traveled portion of North First Street from Dresser up to Bethany. We divided it into three pieces because we didn't know what the prices were going to be. We had an engineer's estimate for the base bid and two alternates that was over a million dollars, all right? So the base bid, which was to resurface North First from Dresser to Stony Creek, you know, about halfway, a little more than halfway, came in very aggressively, a little bidder Kern Contracting. Also, their alternate won, very aggressive, and that was to resurface the second half, if you will, the northern part from Stony Creek up to Bethany. And we had an alternate two, which was sort of the home run for us. Usually what happens, we resurface, we don't have the money to crack fill, so instead of a 20-year, 25-year road, we get about a, well, they last, we continue to drive on them, but as you've driven up North First, you see what happens. We get the coat of many colors and patches and so forth, and they pop, and we keep doing it month by month. Something that will help with that is a mesh that goes down before the final lift, or Zach, I hope I'm not butchering that. Did I do all right? Thank you. And without that, we, and if we don't have the budget for the crack filling and the other maintenance-type activities that we haven't over recent years, we would see sooner, a failure that would come sooner. And so even the numbers with the mesh are well within our engineer's estimate by some $350,000. So what we've recommended is that we go with all three layers, the base bid, alternate one, and alternate two. We award the contract to Kern. The total cost, including a little bit of a cushion for change orders and so forth, is $715,341. There's still hundreds of thousands of dollars left for other things in our reserve. So this is a great deal. Take it. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Motion and resolution passes. Number seven, resolution 2019-087, authorizing the city manager to amend the professional service agreements with Wills Burke Kelsey Associates Limited for engineering services relating to Annie Glidden Road intersection. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas.
You'll recall, it's probably been almost a month and a half, two months ago now, that we had some concerns about the tail end of a project that was started in the fall, didn't get completed, and by the first snowfall, and then we had an early snowfall, and then we wrestled with traffic control, and now we've been able to see the end of it. Through all of this, somebody had to be on site to make sure that anytime anybody was out there trying to work and get a little further toward the finish, that they were doing it right. The contract we had for that engineering oversight was with Wills Burke Kelsey Associates, WBK. Some of you are familiar with them. They've done very good work for our city over the years and did very good work on this tough project, which was done under "traffic," as they say. And I would say they have put in over a month's worth of free labor and many trips out just to make sure things were done well. We felt it was appropriate to pay something toward their extra effort. The total we've proposed here at the staff is $9,600. That's still well within the margin for, the I dot carries for allowances in construction projects with this degree of difficulty. We ask that you approve our recommendation of that additional $9,600, which really doesn't cover their costs, but it's a contribution toward some extraordinary effort under the less than ideal circumstances. That would bring the total engineering cost on this project to $149,600.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
And that resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more resolution this evening under eight, resolution 2019-088, authorizing a tax increment financing grant in the amount of $21,308 to DeKalb Iron and Metal Company, located at 900 Oak Street, for the repair and replacement of a screening fence. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. The new owner of DeKalb Iron and Metal, Chad Schwepke, is in the audience tonight. Chad? He wore that colored shirt so we even know where he was sitting. We've had a conversation off and on over the last month and a half or so. He has done a good job in cleaning up a operation, which is an operation that, isn't the clean operation that people see a lot of these days. It's a very needful operation, though. We have a lot of local people who need to have a salvage yard like this, and they do very well with contractors and other vendors in the region. They've made some significant repairs and cleanup of the site, and there's one piece left, and that is inherited by Mr. Schwepke, and that's the, was considered at the time probably to be a screening fence, but when you have piles of things and you have large cranes or backhoes that are above that fence, it doesn't do quite what it was intended to do. The fence that is there now is an eight-foot fence with about another foot, which is open, but it has barbed wire on it facing inward so that people can't pilfer the metals, some of which are going to return something significant to the owner. And our preference for screening is a 10-foot-high fence. There is, I provided in your background some photos that were taken. You can see the current condition on two of the four sides, and then the other two sides need some new stripping to go into the fence, which is still intact but needs some repair as well. So we've talked, it's in our TIF one, and we looked at the Architectural Improvement Program, but the guidelines for that program don't include a screening fence. It's not identified. Also, this is kind of, in my opinion, and this is what I've recommended to you, this is kind of an all-or-nothing thing. You can't screen 50% of it, or, you know, it's all screened or it's not. And so I thought, considering the contribution that the owner has made toward cleaning up the neighborhood and the operation, and the work that he intends to do at that site, that we ought to get behind him and as a new owner and in our industrial sector, which has been very thin lately in terms of jobs and so forth, and pay for the 100% rather than 50%, which often is the maximum we can pay under the Architectural Improvement Program. The pricing, we got some pretty aggressive, he got some pretty aggressive prices, so $21,308 is the amount before you tonight in the way of a TIF grant, and I recommend that to you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Chad, thank you very much for bringing that forward to us. Glad to help out. I think that 10-foot fence there will be quite an improvement. Okay, there are no ordinances. Item number K for second reading tonight. However, there are a number of ordinances considerations that we are being presented for first reading tonight, and the first one is ordinance number 2019-040, authorizing a zoning map amendment to the CBD, Central Business District, to the PDC, Planned Development Commercial District, authorizing a planned development preliminary and final plan, and authorizing waivers to the Unified Development Ordinance. This is for Lovell's Discount Tire at 424 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor. We do have one person who would like to speak to this ordinance consideration, and that
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to speak pro or con to the pluses or minuses of this particular proposal. I, quite frankly, have not evaluated it thoroughly enough to reasonably do so, but I would like to talk to the council about the issue of waiving second reading. That is in place in terms of procedure for a reason, especially, I'd like to express this to the new council members in particular. Waiver of second reading, in my view, should not be done on significant and/or controversial issues, unless there is a compelling reason to do so. In this proposal, it is both the preliminary and the final plan, and it is authorizing waivers to the UDO. That, to my mind, rises to the level of significance. The public often doesn't pay attention to city council action until it's passage on first reading, where the media is likely to give it prominent attention. I mean, you have to realize that you all are involved in it, you all are looking at it. This is true of the last issues that we talked about, too, at this meeting, but the public isn't. And you need to keep that in mind and bring the public along. That's why second reading is there. So as a result, I would urge you not to agree to a waiving of second reading unless there is a significant case made, because what it does is it denies the public that last chance to pay attention. One other element that puts question mark in my mind is that Lovell's Tires was the beneficiary of a triple dip of TIF money when they built this building, by presenting the city with three facades in a new building. So somehow, one building, they were able to create three facades and get three times the money for this new building. And then, to add insult to injury, they didn't, they put in work order changes to eliminate some of the architectural features that were required for them to put in within eyesight of... of the city employee who oversaw this from his office, when he'd go back and forth in and out of his office, until the work was done and then it was paid without an evaluation of the architectural features that were eliminated by work order changes. So there's a matter of trust with regard to this, for me, for my own personal sake. But in principle, what I said stands on that. You have to make the evaluation as to whether you think it fits that or not.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we have no other speakers to that item, and I'd like to ask City Manager Nicholas, do you have any comments?
I do. So the speaker from the public has made two very serious charges, and I think probably in explaining what's before you, I can address those. One is that the public hasn't had a chance to look at this. This has been in the quay for a year and a half. There've been public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission, excuse me. The plan has been wrestled and torn and rebuilt with a number of engineers, including our own engineer who succeeded a previous engineer working on this, and it's a tough site. It's, we were talking in the last item about our industrial past. It's an area that many years ago was for railroad shops and then a railroad signal tower and then a small restaurant, which went through many different generations of different owners, never really making it because of the location in the shadow of the crossbars for the railroad. Two state highways convened there. But despite these difficulties, Mr. Lovell, who bought this land back in nineteen eighty-seven, has made something of it, has actually turned it into a flower. I think people have short memories if they were here and they don't remember what it looked like then, and people who weren't here are seeing something that it's a new building. It's a nice, clean facade. It does a good business. It's kept other businesses in that little block alive because it passes off tire work and, or it has tire work and car work to other, are the uses right in the shadow of The petition that's before you tonight seeks final and preliminary plan approval because of the working over that is taken. There's really nothing more to squeeze out of this from the public standpoint or from an engineering standpoint. IDOT has reviewed it extensively. It is in favor with their standards. We're almost to June, and we're talking about, should you approve it? Should we carry this over for another period of time? If this is to get done this year, and we thought, I guess, it was going to be done last year, but at the staff level, we were working it over, not, Mr. Lovell wasn't dragging his feet, but we were working it over and again and again and again. And I found this, when I came in in early January, adrift, and we pulled it back together, and here it is before you on almost June first. The Plan Commission just recently looked at this. What's called a waiver in this case, you know, the UDO doesn't anticipate everything, so if you're going to move in any direction that isn't explicitly stated, then you ask for a waiver, and then you identify the waiver, and then you have public discussion about it, you have a hearing, and then it comes to you, and you have more discussion about it. These waivers are all about appearance, for the most part, and so at some additional cost, the owner, Mr. Lovell and his family, are going to incur, they're going to make it the way we want it to be, we want it to be. So we have nothing more to ask of the owner to meet our codes and ordinances, and the Plan Commission recommended unanimously to you that the proposed plan, which has the details which are carefully written into your background report by our principal planner, which has those details in it, that that would be approved by you tonight. So we ask that you approve the petition. We also ask that you consider waiving second reading tonight, so this job can get going.
There's a motion on the floor in a second that we approve this on first reading. Any comments or questions? Alderman McAdams.
I would like to speak to the issue that Mr. Capitan brought up about waiving second reading. I agree with you on principle, and we should leave these things out in the public for a little bit longer for discussion. My only issue is that when we have unanimous votes at the staff level and then at the commission level and then at the city council level, at that point, it doesn't seem like, if there's a genuine thing to address, if there's a real, some issue that still has, it leaves open, then yes. But in those cases where it's unanimous at all those levels, I would be, I would lean towards waiving second reading.
Any other comments? Alderman Favor.
I was just going to say, in terms of, along the lines of waiving second reading, again, this has been, this has been in talks and discussion. It's been in the works for quite a while. I know that when, you know, this is what I've heard from businesses coming to DeKalb is when somebody wants to invest in DeKalb and they want to do something, it's always, it seems like we're always trying to slow down their investment where they could go to another municipality, get welcomed with open arms, and spend their money, open their business, start generating tax dollars, where when they come to DeKalb, the first thing that we say is, well, let's wait. Let's think about this. Again, I agree. When it's been unanimously approved, when someone's wanting to come and invest in our city, we need to consider what any implications are. But again, it's been through planning and zoning. It's been vetted by staff. It is, you know, I will, if somebody doesn't beat me to it, I will recommend that we waive second reading and approve.
Any other comments? Okay, this is a motion and a second, and this is a vote on first reading. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes on first reading. I would entertain a motion to waive second reading and approve.
I would make a motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Who did that second? Alderman.
Tracy.
Don't fight over it, guys.
Tracy did.
Okay. Been a move by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance passes. Kevin and Lovell, thank you. Thank you for continuing to believe in downtown and putting some more additional dollars. Glad to cooperate with you. Okay, number two. Ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-one authorizing an amendment to Ordinance nineteen ninety-eight dash oh-seven-five to accommodate a new landscape plan along South Fourth Street to the DeKalb Park District Sports and Recreation Center located at seventeen-sixty-five South Fourth Street. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you. This is an example, I think, of even the best intentions at the government level don't always work out. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, Park District was intending on building a rec center down off of South Fourth Street, and after listening to neighbor concerns and other considerations, the specifications for screening along South Fourth Street were laid out in a pretty severe way, but it was thought at the time that it would be workable. Very steep-sloped, tall berm was to be defined, and then trees, you can see pictures here that were to be effective from a screening standpoint, were to be installed, and those trees have grown up very high. They're getting near the power lines. If you've driven down there recently, with all this rain, the grass is growing wild, and they can't mow this steep-slope berm, so they have to hit it with a weed whacker, and that doesn't look so good. And so I think, in a very generous way, the Park District has come before the city's Planning and Zoning Commission before you tonight to ask if they can do something better, reduce the height of the berm, but then put plantings in that won't grow up into the wires but will bring color year-round, a little more creativity in the selection of those plants, and actually, more plants than was ever designed back in nineteen ninety-eight. The Plan Commission loved it. At the staff level, we do, too. Plan Commission is unanimous in its support. We recommend your support for this particular ordinance on first and second reading tonight.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve this on first reading. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Tony, I didn't see.
I'm assuming that when this went before planning and zoning, that the neighborhood was notified, because I remember when this went in or when this was going in, what a deal it was at the time.
Yeah, and they were notified again here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and some, probably since in your background, a longer memo from Dan Olson came to speak and say, this is much better. That's pretty good confirmation.
Okay. Are we ready? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance passes on first reading. I entertain a motion if anyone is interested in waiving second reading and approving this ordinance.
I'd like to move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance passes. Thank you very much. Number three. Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-two authorizing a special use permit for an outdoor patio and deck at two forty-one and two forty-nine East Lincoln Highway at the Hometown Sports Bar and Grill. I'd entertain a motion, please, to approve this on first reading.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Alder, City Manager Nicholas, please.
This is the last step in that process that the council began back in December with a preliminary development agreement for forgivable TIF loan to help Tom Schmidt with his expansion plans in order to get to where he wants to be with the improvements. He would like to have an outdoor deck, a place where people can eat and have beverages behind his operation, and certain requirements had to be met to do that. There had to be both preliminary and final review of this at the Plan Commission level, and so that's what just recently occurred. The write-up that Dan Olson has given has a lot more detail than my write-up, but he's met our expectations. The Plan Commission supported this by a vote of six to nothing and recommended the city council's approval. We support the Plan Commission recommendation.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance passes on first reading. I would entertain a motion if anyone is interested in waiving second reading and approving.
Motion to waive second reading and approve. Second.
Alderman, moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance is approved. Thank you. Number four. Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-three amending Ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash zero-one-nine in authorizing a change to the implementation date for compliance with the Greek Housing Fire Safety Act for specified properties to August one, two thousand and nineteen. I'd entertain a motion to get this to the floor, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, and before I get any further on this one, I want to thank our fire chief for his steadfast dedication to seeing that our Greek organizations, those with housing that fall under the State Fire Safety Act, which requires the installation of fire sprinkler systems, that they comply. We've, in the last year, finally, they've had a number of years to get to this point, but somewhere a little slow in getting off the mark. The fire chief has visited with owners and managers repeatedly. We've also opened up avenues of communication with NIU because the people who live in these houses are typically NIU students, so that they're aware. Time is of the essence. The houses are supposed to be in compliance by August first. The council has to allow for the extension of the deadline, which would have been June thirtieth, and so we ask that we extend that deadline to August first. There are four properties in particular, thirteen-hundred Blackhawk, eight-twenty-three Greenbrier, nine-nineteen Greenbrier, and nine-twenty West Hillcrest, which are before you tonight. We recommend your approval.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve this on first reading. Are we pretty confident, Chief, that this is going to get done?
Very much so. Based upon the meetings that we've been having and the documentation that they provided to us, they will be able to get these projects completed by August first.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken.
Chief, a quick question. I know that the state law required the original implementation to be by January one just passed. How has the state fire marshal responded to our making the extension originally, and has there been any issues across the state because of that?
The state, the state has made us the jurisdiction having authority to enforce this. Their law was that it be done by July first. They have really had no active enforcement or checking on municipalities in order to get this done. Because of the compressed timeframe, we, as a city, put protection in place or markers in place where they have to continuously show, the property owners, that is, that they are working towards getting compliance with the state law. We've been working closely, and they're going to move through. It's just, they've been very active.
All right, thank you.
It's an unfunded mandate, as you can see. Because many of these houses are down to two or three people, actually, probably legal in terms of
in place where they have to continuously show, the property owners, that is, that they are working towards getting compliance with the state law. We've been working closely, and they're going to move through. It's just, they've been very active.
All right, thank you.
It's an unfunded mandate, as you can see. Because many of these houses are down to two or three people, actually, probably legal in terms of zoning in the summer, if we had just shut them off, there is still theoretically, anyway, time for them to get this done. We visited with the sprinkler contractor, who has a contract with each of these houses, and they say they can get it done. We're going to have to trust in that, and if they don't get it done, then we have made contingency plans with NIU to find other ways for students to be housed for the fall semester.
Yeah, I think the reasons for our questions, frankly. Okay, roll call on this, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That passes on first reading, and this probably really makes sense to waive second reading.
Moved to waive and approve on second reading.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance passes. Thank you. Okay, now we go to reports and communications on your agenda, item M. And this is the place on the agenda where each and every one of our council members has an opportunity to report on anything or communicate anything they'd like. We'd start with our first ward, Alderman Carolyn Morris.
I had the pleasure of visiting Jay's Supermarket today on Hillcrest, and was thrilled to find that they had a significant amount of fresh vegetables. It was kind of tucked in the back, you have to go all the way in and figure it out. And I also bumped into a couple of entrepreneurs who are trying to make a go of things there, and Moni's Soul Food, she was one of them, and it was really exciting to see people adapting to the environment. And I've seen Moni working out of American Dream Tax down the way, and it sounds like she's going to move across the street to over by Jimmy John's. But it was really good to connect with them and also see that there was actually fresh food and vegetables in my ward, so.
We really appreciate, I know you shared this information, some pictures, and some verbiage to the city council members and the city manager. I was just delighted when I saw that, yeah, there is fresh food up there, because for months, for years, we've talked about a gasoline station being the only source of fresh food in the, what we call the Antiglen North area, and to see this, not only do I appreciate those entrepreneurs stepping up and doing this, and I hope they're very, very successful, but I really appreciate, Carolyn, you're bringing this to our attention today and making a public comment on it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
They also had some really exotic foods, so lots of really interesting, different things, if you've got a unique recipe.
Good, thank you. Anything else? Alderman Fanouken, second ward.
You know, I was very heartened to hear that today about the fresh groceries. One of the main topics of consideration by the Antiglen Task Force was the lack of fresh food in that neighborhood, and to hear that, at least even now on a small basis, those needs are being met, is exciting. And then, of course, the other thing, Dean, this may be the quietest I've ever seen you at a city council meeting. But thank you again. Chief, thank you for both of your years of service.
Alderman Smith.
I just have to say a big thanks for the flags on Locust Street. My dad is one of them. That's all I can really say. It was very touching. We took him down, he had no idea, and I thank you, that's all I can say.
Yeah, a shout-out to Mike Embry and the American Legion Post for getting that off the ground. I believe that they're going to be up till about November or something like that, perhaps?
Memorial Day, November 11.
Okay. And, you know, it's going to, this project has taken off so well that I think we're going to have some more devised, so we'll find a place for them. Thank you. Anything else, Tracy?
No, sir.
Alderman McAdams.
I want to say that on Thursday at 7:00 in this very room, I will be honoring one of the few campaign pledges I made when I ran for this position, was that we would hold quarterly ward meetings. So the first ward meeting for the fifth ward will be on Thursday at 7:00, and we'll be discussing parking regulations and other issues. And I also want to echo the sentiments that have been expressed with Chief Lowery and with our city attorney. Thank you very much for what you've done for the city.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
Same goes, all the best. Gene, Dean, thank you. In the sixth ward, a number of construction projects are going to be underway soon, with Home2 Suites, Pizza Hut, McDonald's, and on June 10th, Fast Mart. The fuel tank work that's been long overdue will get underway, and they're hoping to have that resolved by the end of June.
Thank you. The momentum continues in town. It certainly does. Alderman Favor.
I just want to say thank you to Chief Lowery and to Dean. I've enjoyed working with you, and I appreciate the support you both have given me. Thank you very much. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Next week, on June 6, the farmer's market down at Van Buren Plaza will open. On June 12, Music at the Mansion, a effort of Mike Embry and the DeKalb Park District, will kick off on the lawn of the historic Elwood House. On June 22, Blues Brews and Balloons at the airport. We just have a host of art shows and art exhibits around our community, and I would encourage you to continue to be on the lookout for those. Lynn Fizikas, our city clerk, any comments?
No report today, thank you.
And finally, City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
Okay, that concludes our regular session. I would entertain a motion to recess for executive session to, number one, approve the executive session to discuss, number one, personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C1. And number two, to discuss executive session minutes as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C21. I'd entertain a motion to recess into executive session. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we recess and go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. We are now in recess to the executive conference room for executive session. Thank you, everyone.